All right, I am going to call this the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And I'm gonna make it short because I am going to ask for a nomination for board chair so they can take over this meeting.
Yes, I will nominate Brian Duffy for board chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Megan, was that a second?
Yep.
Okay.
I did ask him first. I asked before I was gonna hand it over.
Congratulations.
Any discussion from the group?
No, there's no dis- we've already had a discussion and we're moving on.
Brian, it sounds like you've been selected to take the position as a board chair.
It's an honor to be nominated.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
I'm gonna do roll call. Daniel?
Here, present.
Okay. Kate?
You're voting.
You're voting on whether he's the chair.
Present, I'll take as a yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You gotta tell him what he's voting for.
If he's here, he's.
I thought you said roll call.
Roll call vote for yes or no.
Guys like, perfect, yay.
Thank you. Kate?
Yes.
I like the enthusiasm, yay.
Allison?
Yep.
Thank you. Five zero. Brian, I turn it over to you and you get to do your nomination for the chair.
Uh, Allison, would you be vice chair?
No, I'm gonna nominate Megan to be vice chair. I ironed that out before I came to.
I was unaware of that.
Allison, move.
I ironed that out. Wait a minute, I was disappointed.
Is there a motion for the vice chair? Motion. I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call for that, Chris?
Yeah.
All right. Dan?
We have to roll call.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Congratulations, Megan.
Do you see how quickly I just moved right out of that?
Allison's gonna make a motion to restrict reconsideration.
Yes. This is day one of year eight. I'm on my way out.
All right, well, thank you all.
Feeling pretty happy now, Daniel, after hearing all that?
This is shocking. I came to the January meeting and you were running the show.
Yeah?
I guess.
Yeah?
We'll adapt.
Shocking for me too, I am sorry.
Sorry.
All right.
Brian wasn't there that night.
All right, so I guess we should go into a pledge of allegiance, which we have not done yet.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Non-public session is on here at number two, Chris. Do we have a need for non-public?
You will need to at the end, yep. Under letter C.
Okay.
Yep.
Next item is public comment. So we will open public comment at 6:04. If anyone has anything they'd like to say? All right, well, public comment will remain open for 30 minutes and I'll make an announcement just before that ends.
I feel like you should get this table now, we'll switch. You're like kitty cornered.
Well, your purse was taking up space.
Now.
Feel like you're like.
All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes put together? I have changes for the minutes. Page two of the school board meeting minutes. So page two of the minutes package under section two, public comment. Second paragraph, select board representative Jen Jones thanked the board for allow the election to take place, so for allowing. Next paragraph, Daphne Wass rather than Watts. And then moving on to page four of the minutes under sections 4.6 and 4.8, there's headings for budget committee and wellness committee. I suspect there were no updates, but I think it would just make sense to reflect in the minutes, no updates from this committee. So it doesn't look like there's anything missing.
It also says Heater Haggot, not Heather Haggot.
Silly question. How do these minutes get generated? Like, is someone, I don't see anyone taking notes.
Video?
Oh, video. And then someone transcribes it?
Yes, and then Nancy Hoyer transcribes them. So her name is there. At the end. Still on page four, section 5.3, we have Doug, the moderator. I think it would make sense to put his surname in there, so Doug Cowie. Moderator for the school district. And then on page six, at the motion to adjourn the meeting, we have a blank for the time of the adjournment. I think we should fill that in if we can.
Yep, we can do that.
I had no comments on the non-public meetings. Non-public minutes, excuse me.
Can't tell, Dan. You don't have to worry about the grammar because Brian covers that for us.
Roger that.
We look at content and Brian looks at grammar.
Yeah, I don't even know what any of this meant. I don't look at content at all, it's just strictly grammar.
I make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes as amended.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you abstain.
You will abstain because you were not.
Oh, even though I can see the minutes but I wasn't present.
Well, you have no idea for the accurate or not. So, yeah, so if you miss the meeting, abstain from approval of the minutes of the next.
Understood.
Meeting. All right, I think we can do the report from the chair and once we get through all the committees, maybe talk about who will do what committee, if that makes sense to everybody. So, safety and security task force is.
We met since our last meeting. I'm trying to remember like time is, but I don't think we've met since. So we had a safety and security task force committee meeting, was great, went through some of the updates on grant projects and just some of the drills that are going on in the district. My goal for the next one is to have Brentwood representation. I think we're the only town that didn't have any fire or police there. A lot of people have chiefs or officers, but we didn't have. So I'm gonna reach out before the next meeting. They're really interesting, like it's cool to be in a room with that many people.
I can't imagine our chief would not.
So I'm just gonna make sure they know about them. Like, I'll give them an extra invitation and.
Can you, me, or the board, Dan?
Yep, for sure, because that would be great.
I've asked Esther a few times and they get an invitation every meeting.
Okay, so I'll just.
Maybe just, yeah, tell them what it's about.
Yep. That'd be perfect. But it was, I mean, it was good. But that's the goal for next time.
I'm gonna just jump around a little bit because I think you have a lengthy thing on superintendent evaluation, so I'll save the lengthy ones for last. So we'll move to communications.
So the communications committee met and went through all the survey results and then the next step is the communications committee kind of wrapped up because then it's gonna go on to the superintendent's vision planning thing and they're gonna use those survey results to make us, to take the next step forward.
Didn't something come out about the results? No?
I don't think publicly.
Lots of stuff came out of the results. No, I just, I couldn't remember. Nothing? Email about them.
I think it was just that it ended and that information was being collated and that it would be shared out. You'll get it at the joint board and then it will share out with the public after that.
So there are no future meetings of the communications committee?
No.
And we can remove this from our
Yes.
updates for now. Wellness.
So the wellness committee did meet. We met last, two weeks ago. And Heather Murray joined us and Heather had, Chris, you probably know more than I do, but Heather had gone through maybe with you guys, the policy that we had drafted last spring and had made quite a few changes. And so she went through all of those changes and there were very few of us there, so the next steps was for everybody to go over her changes. And the goal was to get it to you guys, to the policy committee. It has to be approved this year or else, it has to be approved this year. And so I think the goal was to get it to you guys for April or May, maybe May, probably. And then, and then it needs to be at the board, to us as the boards by June, to be approved. So I sent Heather, like a couple of days after the meeting, I sent Heather all of my feedback on the updated version, so.
Okay.
I would guess that not very many other people would do that.
Policy committee meets the third Thursday of the month?
Yeah, I mean Heather was there, so they knew, yeah.
So I don't know if there is time to get it in for April. At this point, I don't know what the feedback cycle is, but.
It was, maybe.
She's got on her board to do, so I think it's just cleaning it up, so.
Yeah.
It will definitely get done this year.
It's a, it's a, just so that you guys all know, it's a federal law. The wellness policy is a federal law attached to the school lunch program. Yep. And so we, we need to, in order to be compliant, it has to get passed, it has to be in place.
So it doesn't exist, this isn't like a revised version?
Well, no, there was a version. There was a version that started, but this committee decided we're gonna write our own. And actually, I drafted the policy that's in, that's being reviewed right now and then Heather Murray made quite a few edits to it, but I drafted it based on the New Hampshire School Board Association model as well as Generation Alliance for Healthier Generations Model Wellness Policy, so. But it was long and so I think the goal was to, Esther told me to make it, told us to make it, like, to put everything that we wanted in it, to make it like, you know, the best case scenario and then they would talk about what was feasible, so.
And there's no risk that we like will not get reimbursement for lunches if it's not in place now, right?
I don't think so, I don't think they're required, but it's just having the policy in the right timeline, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And while we're on the topic, do you think the wellness policy, once developed and finalized and adopted, would be a good article subject for the town newsletter? Is it too in the weeds?
Uh, no, I think it would be. I mean, there's not like, there's not like huge amounts of changes that will occur, but what's gonna happen with the wellness policy is it's gonna come with a toolkit that will be populated over the next year or two, that will provide schools with, like, schools are gonna have to do assessment of their wellness practices and develop like a strategic plan. There's gonna have to be, there's like, there has to be like four or five goals set within each school related to wellness each year and those have to be like measurable and reported out at the end of the year. There's like a report. So Jean Pierce has, is, as the director of food services for the district, is the chair of the wellness committee. Yeah, no, I mean, I think it will be, I think that like, you know, there'll be material to, you know, for like healthy celebrations. There'll be like toolkit material that the schools will be able to use to help educate parents, to, you know, help teachers guide, you know. So, and the cool thing is that, you know, I can have my grad students draft most of that toolkit material, so it's like kind of a good fit all around. So.
Okay. We're often struggling for, not struggling, but you know, trying to think of content for the town newsletter and if that's something that would be.
Yeah, no, I think it would be worthwhile.
Down the road.
So although there isn't like a formal policy in place today, I'm curious just to know like highlights for what Swayze is doing in this area proactively, like what, as it relates to wellness.
Well, um.
Just being new to the board and all of this.
You know, the, the bringing of food from home has always been something that's been a challenge because everybody wants to celebrate student birthdays and I think since the pandemic, we've held a pretty strong line about no outside food coming in for celebrations and families have been pretty compliant about that. We kind of would rather an activity be sent in, so. That's, that's just one example of the wellness aspect.
I think bringing the cafeteria service in-house rather than relying upon the SAU to do it is a big part of that, but something that Allison really pushed for. And then I think the classroom teachers also encourage a lot of movement outside time for even instructional time. So, like, woven throughout what the school does.
I mean, the wellness policy covers activity, nutrition, those are the two major components of it and then just sort of logistics of how it all works. And so for activity, it's like we surveyed all of the schools in the district before we wrote it to see what was happening and so the activity is gonna look like a minimum of 30 minutes of recess a day, which Swayze is being compliant with. It's encouraging of classroom activity breaks, which I think teachers would, elementary school teachers would be insane, like, like they would be driven insane if they weren't doing those, so. Those are happening here. In the high school and the middle school, they're compliant by just moving from classroom to classroom, you know, that three-minute or whatever it is break between classes. It's looking at a lot of like education and, you know, I think there's goals to move more to like getting more like farm-to-school type programs and stuff like that, but.
That's helpful, thank you.
Well, that's exciting, I think, from the wellness committee. Budget committee. Our budget was voted on and approved and there's no budget committee meeting since then and likely to be no budget committee meetings till the fall.
Nope, there's a budget committee meeting on April 29th.
April 29th, okay.
That's why the emails have, that I sent to you guys, yes.
Okay.
And Jack would like somebody there.
All right. That's Monday.
Yep, yeah, it was supposed to be the 15th and I told him that we had a joint board and it couldn't, we couldn't attend that night and so then he moved it to the 22nd and I told him that was school vacation week, so now it is the 29th.
Okay. So we have no update for that, but we'll have to, when we discuss committee assignments, we'll have to identify someone to attend that meeting. I can probably do so. If.
Well, we can talk about it.
Talk about it later. All right. Any upcoming community engagement events?
No, I think we need to kind of reassess what we're doing for that. I mean, really, it's been the newsletter and I'm not sure that we need to do more, but I just think we need to assess like how we're engaging in community.
There are a lot of people I feel like starting to come into the school though for the celebrations of learning, so like it could be a, I don't know, maybe that's another newsletter topic is like kind of a, like, this is what the grades do, not inviting people, but like fourth grade does wax museum, third grade does, like, just, I don't know. Because it's a time where at least parents, grandparents are coming into the school this spring.
All right. Any board member queries or correspondence?
I did not receive any.
I did not receive any either. Oh. All right.
Just speaking about community and actually I probably should have mentioned it during school and safety, over the last two weeks, we've had a couple of police officers just pop in. And on one occasion, they stayed for like 45 minutes in the lunchroom. It was great, yeah.
All right.
Just to make sure I'm clear, queries and correspondence is referring to anything?
If you receive an email from a member of the community via SAU email saying, hey, I'm curious about this, I have a question about this.
Or someone comes up and wants to talk to you about it.
Gotcha.
Just a place to say it.
And that's like a standing agenda item at these meetings?
Yes.
And people will do that to you.
Okay, good to know.
Or they will, they might not, they never do it to me.
Not, now they will.
I know you.
Yeah, I know how they might, yeah.
Just correct their grammar.
And if it's apparent, I mean, I don't mind speaking up. You're always welcome to point them in my direction too.
Gotcha.
That way it doesn't have to wait until a board meeting.
In general, that is true, right? Like if anybody comes to us with like a question or concern, in general, our first step should be, have you talked to Ms. Review about this? Like, or, you know, to reach out to him.
And so you're not to respond right away other than redirect to principal queue?
So response, email is, is the chair. So like if we get now emails, right, Chris? Like if we get emails, we should forward them to, Brian is our voice now.
Gotcha.
And in general, most emails will come to Brian, like people will look up.
Okay.
I mean, quite honestly, the most emails I got would be from Jen Jones, like the select board would come, like, those are probably the most requests that I would get, so.
Yeah. I wouldn't anticipate that.
All right. I think we'll do policy committee next because those are relatively straightforward, I believe, and then do superintendent evaluation. So I was unable to attend the policy committee meeting on the 21st because it conflicted with the work obligation, but as usual, you have Heather's excellent summary. I was able to provide input into the policies, which had to be an email prior to the meeting. These are all tied to school publications, so either well, academic honesty and integrity, which is largely a little bit over the Swayze level, but nevertheless, potentially applicable at the grade four and five level. And then school and student publications and district social media websites and website publishing are more administrative instructor level, administrator level policies. These are all based as usual on state and federal law and developed from models from New Hampshire School Board Association. So you have the summaries, you have the full policies. So we have four new policies to adopt and one KDC-R. Two Sunset.
I didn't have any.
They seem pretty.
Yeah.
I was interested by the, on the statement on AI, I thought was good, that, you know, that we can't say, you can't, you know, it can't be used because there's gonna be a lot of reasons.
And honestly, there's a comment you had in there about the definite, they specifically decided not to define AI.
Right.
And I, that was one of my email questions, like you don't even define what AI is and it's a really broad term that encompasses quite a bit, but I think not defining it does give them greater flexibility, so it does make sense. And it, yeah, allows them to address things as they come up or allow students to use things as they become available. So. There's a motion to adopt the policies?
A motion to adopt policy IKL, JICE, KD and KDC.
I second that.
All in favor? All right, any opposed? All right. As our motion to dispense with KDC-R, it's basically an earlier version of the KDC policy.
I'll make a motion to withdraw KDC-R.
And a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That is policy committee. Superintendent evaluation.
All right, so we, at the end of the meeting, we'll go into non-public to do the evaluation and I think Chris is gonna give us an update. Do you want to do that now?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
So here's some template that you can use to follow along. I believe Dr. Hasbell included kind of her roadmap for action steps to meet the goals. I'm not gonna read each goal to you, I'll just do some highlights based on each goal and each metric. And then if you have any questions, we can dig into this, but this can help you to formulate how you want to make a response when you go into non-public.
So before you do that, just, I guess for Dan's sake, I'll just go through the process so that.
That's smart.
So this is a new process for us this year and what we have, the evaluation will be two parts. We are doing a 360 evaluation, which is brand new and we have spent quite a bit of time crafting the tool. We looked at a couple other districts' models. We looked at what our own objectives were, we looked at superintendent search. Like we had done a huge community survey when we did the superintendent search, so we looked at that data. And so the 360 will go out, it's listed in here, but it will go out to central office staff. So that's, you know, like the staffing in Chris and Molly's office, it will go up to the senior leadership team, which is all the superintendent, assistant superintendent, directors. It will go out to all of our K to 12 administrators, so that's 36. So here it will be our our principal and our vice principal at schools that don't have a vice principal, it might be a curriculum coordinator or some other designee. At like the high school and the middle school will be all of the principal, the assistant principals and principal. Then it will go to it will go to a union rep for both the teachers and the paraprofessionals at all the schools. And the two districts that don't have paraprofessional unions, they'll just provide a rep. So I can't do the math in my head this quickly, but it's somewhere around 60 or so people that will do the 360. And so the goal for us is to get that back. By, it's, it's going out this month, where I think our goal is to have it oh, actually today, so by mid-April, it would, we would have the data back. And then the second part of it is to go over S, the goals, the superintendent's goals. And get her feedback. All of the boards will provide feedback in their meetings like we do tonight. And then the superintendent committee, evaluation committee will take everything and draft a report that will be presented. It's gonna be presented, the joint board will get a chance to look at it, but Esther actually, Dr. Hasbell actually wants it presented in public.
Okay.
She wants it total transparency. And so it's actually going to be presented in public on May 20th at our joint board meeting.
Okay.
And then it will go into her files. So it's, it's a new process and we wanted it to be really thorough and comprehensive and we can dial it back down if we want. But it's a process that has really been missing for a few years and we wanted to close the, some of the issues that it being missing caused.
And the 360 eval, like is that intended to be an annual 360 evaluation?
Mm-hmm.
And the questions in the eval, is it more superintendent centric or more just like?
So the questions are in the board packet, so you can see them all, but there's there's three sections of them. So the section focus area one is mission-driven growth mindset equity, equity orientation and culture. And so there's seven questions there. They're all designed to look at the culture in which she is, the culture that she's building. You know, the sort of administrative oversight that she's providing and then the leadership qualities is the third. So focus area two, like future work skills and disposition, so looking at coaching, social emotional intelligence, administrative leadership. And then the last is her leadership skills and attributes. And those are things that as a joint board, we felt really, really strongly we wanted evaluated because it was something that came up previously as, as a challenge for us as a district. And so we pulled some of those traits actually from the superintendent search process in what the community wanted as a, in their superintendent.
This is helpful. I think I got a grasp of the process and where.
Great, thank you. That was helpful. So you, as you look at the roadmap, the first goal was to develop a, implement a vision summit. So last Tuesday, we had 70 members from the public, give or take. Dr. Higgins was there in attendance and went through the initial work of looking at our vision of a graduate and also looking at our vision statement in regards to DIJ and how we could bring some of those characteristics into both. So that was the first stage. From there, senior leadership took all the information and we're setting up and writing what those comments came out and then that'll go back to the 70 people for more vetting. And that'll be brought to other stakeholders, students, administrators and teachers. So there's multiple steps, but that first step was started. So that was for her goal number one. That summit has been started on the 26th of March and will continue until we get to a finalized place. Any questions with goal number one? Okay, goal two is more. Okay, goal two is more about creating a, a culture of communication. That definitely was heard through the, the communication survey, but what were other ways that we could be present? I think last year was, how is the superintendent present at multiple things and also making connections in our communities? With the six communities that are represented in SAU sixteen. So all, one thing that's been really helpful is that all members of SLT have been meeting with board members, at least five board members a month. Just having conversations about what we do, what can we do better, and what are some goals that you have as a board that we might not be meeting or we're not looking at. So that's been really helpful feedback. Dr. Asbell's created, you know, that work with Qualtrics, that survey on communications that she brought to the joint board. But also the Cooper School District did their own communication survey, so both of those surveys will help to help drive how we conduct communications or look at communications in the future. We made a goal with Dr. Asbell to be as at many school events, so not just sporting events, but also plays and musical events. There are a ton, and as we know, with kids in the district, they fall in. If you've got kids in multiple schools, you are going to have to pick and choose sometimes because of just how, the nature of our schedule. So same with SLT, we've been really trying to be cognizant each month to go to represent different events and get different functions. Dr. Asbell's been meeting quarterly with all the unions, which is something new. So just being able to do a check-in, what's, what's, might be some, some issues that are being, arisen at different schools or with different unions? What are some concerns? So that has been very helpful, so that when we're looking at contracts or we're looking at schedules or other things that we're working collaboratively in, in that partnership. Dr. Asbell's been having feedback sessions in each of the communities. I believe she did one in Brettwood earlier in the year at the library, again, you know, her vision of, of SAU sixteen and suggestions and feedback with the community of what we can do to continue to improve. And then the other part in regards to meeting with the community is, is what are the business partners that we can meet with? So Dr. Asbell's been attending meetings at the Exeter Rotary, as well as any other partners that we can use to help out the schools or work very closely with us and our students. Any questions on goal number two?
I will just add from, because she gave us this update two weeks ago. And one of the things that she shared is that in the SLT board member meetings, they've spent lots of no-shows. Which they were very good sports about. And then I very embarrassingly was a no-show for Renee last week, which I was like horrified when she said how many no-shows there were, and then I was one, but, but anyways, they're having them and they were very good sports about, about the no-shows. They're like, it's okay, because then we get an extra half hour back in our day that we didn't think we were going to have. But I've done all of mine and they are super valuable, so if you guys have.
All, almost all of mine, they just didn't, Chris, we scheduled, like, on our time, but the timing just didn't work and then I forgot.
It's been interesting because, like, I just got an email today saying, you're, you're scheduled to meet with Esther at two o'clock on Thursday. But she can't make it. I was like, well, no one's ever told me one that I was scheduled to meet with her. Secondly, it's the middle of my workday.
There was an email in, like, August or September that had them all for the year.
Oh, well, so maybe Bree's sending that email since I probably missed, I've been to two. How many of them are supposed to be so far?
So there's, there's nine of us, so each month we are meeting with different members.
So I probably missed six because, you know, I missed that one email and then.
I, that would be my only point of feedback, Chris, is that I did take that email back in August and put it into my calendar. But even on my calendar, like, like, if I haven't thought about it in three months, it, you know, I guess it doesn't surprise me that other people.
I was like, huh, I have a meeting in the middle of my workday. That's not going to work. And, but it was canceled, so. I would have missed it otherwise because I didn't know that it was there.
I, I think that's important. I can bring that back to SLT. We each approach it differently. Like, I send out individual emails each month, and then I work with the schedule because I can't commit to a certain time. My schedule doesn't allow that, so that's been much more helpful. I, I think I've only had two no-shows. Where others are just set it, set it in their schedule.
Like, you know, I think it's.
I've met with pretty much everybody at this point, and nobody has ever sent me a reminder.
Right, okay.
In the future, like, trying to remember that the board members actually have other careers that maybe you should, like, try and say, when will this work?
It does, well, it said that, and when it did come out, it said, this is your, your schedule, but just feel free to reach out and work out a time that works for you. So.
Good feedback. I'll bring that back to the team. We meet on Wednesday, so that's helpful.
And if some view it as a, a heavy lift, to have to go back and forth individually like you did with me, then like, does SLT use, like, Calendly or anything like that?
Some of us do. I, I have Calendly that I use, that we can use. Again, we, it doesn't have to be in person. I've done some through Zoom if that works in your schedule. So we just, well, it's great feedback for first year. I think we've really tried and, and now we've seen the bumps in the roads and, yeah, not even going to make it two o'clock on Thursday, so.
You've attended two more than I have.
But only two where people were like, oh, is this time work for you, you know, like yours? And then I was like, oh, I guess there's only been.
That's also like a lot for you guys. Like, I almost wonder if we could, each one of us meets with, like, one to two people so that you guys don't have, like, seven, like, that's just a lot to manage. So make, could we, like, each meet with one or two people and then bring it back as a board?
I think we're open to anything.
Because that's like, it's just, that's a lot of, like, meetings for you guys.
Have they been valuable for you guys?
Yeah, because I, like, for example, I've, I've never worked directly with East Kingston. And when I've met with their board members, I've gotten to know a lot about them. Like, I didn't know some of their board members had kids my, my age and that they'll be going to school together, right? And then when we talked about their goals, they were very similar to the boards I'm working with. So that, that was super helpful for me. So you'd think there's thirty-three board members and we don't get a chance to meet with everybody all the time, you know?
Yeah, I would hate to give, I have loved mine. I would hate to.
But I think we're, we're looking to continue that connection because I think it's been really helpful to, when we're looking and working as a team rather than board and administration. That's not what we were looking for. We're looking to be a team. So I'll bring those all back. That's really helpful. Thank you. Anything else with goal number two? Okay, goal three, that was an online, outline a process to develop SAU strategic plan. As you know, we've got the strategic plan and the budget for next year. Dr. Asbell and I will be meeting with company Qualtrics that helped conduct the survey. They were someone that had put in a bid for, to do the, the strategic plan. So we're going to just do an initial conversation with them of what they can provide coming up in May. And then also looking at giving you all that information. Initially, Dr. Asbell worked with the board back in September to really look at the strategic plan, since it's been outdated now for two years. So knowing that it's outdated, but also getting something into works, and now that we have the budget passed, that will be what we'll be doing starting in May. And then that, that work will really begin next school year, especially after the, the vision statement is complete. Goal four, yeah, go ahead.
Really quick, just under goal two, the second page, meet quarterly with union leadership. She has, it just says, met with all these places in twenty twenty-five. I think it, it should be twenty, the first spot, I guess, the first full box.
Sure, oh, yeah.
Like, all of those are twenty twenty-fives.
I'll change that. No, it's okay. It's helpful. Goal number four was to build leadership capacity through appreciative coaching for all administrators and how to lead and support the development and implementation of the multi-tiered system of support and academics and behavior. MTS's system supports all students at all levels of learning from the highest to the lowest percentile. So one of the metrics we've been looking at is a district academic and behavioral growth reports three times a year. And so you know that Ron and his team has been giving monthly data reports. That is now consistent through all of our boards. So what we adopted originally, Brettwood has taken off, and that's been really helpful. And again, that's on academic, but behavioral, social, emotional, everything that impacts you as a board member, but also our students as part of that report. Again, getting annual presentations on multi-tiered systems of support and what we're doing at those different levels and how we're supporting all students. So different boards are listed here of when those meetings have happened in that completion date. We're looking to continue with coaching opportunities for all administrators and teachers in multi-tiered system supports and what's that mean? So that when they're running the work in their buildings or leading it, that they have had coaching and support for that. And then finally, just making sure that that is also part of our monthly meeting with all of our administrators. So we meet once a month with our principals and all administrators. And that's part of what we do, is that's on some type of MTSS, whether it's tier one, all instruction, or tier two or tier three. Specialized instruction is something that we talk about and what are schools doing. Again, building that common language and building a common resource for all of our schools, so that the experience at Swayze is not going to be different than the experience at Stratum, that we're, we're using common language, because our students are all feeding into our middle school and high school. So that has been on our monthly agenda every month, and again, I think it's been very powerful work. Any questions about goal number four?
I have a question.
Sure.
So Stratum is getting an MTSS, is it a B position?
No, it is full MTSS coordinator.
And so that's separate from, like, a vice principal or a social worker. It's like a separate role.
Correct, it is.
Interesting.
Yeah, so that was approved in their budget. And so we'll start interviewing for that, but that position will not only work with all teachers and look at the data in the, with students, how they're growing academically, behaviorally, and also emotionally. But then they'll go in and they'll do some best teaching practices with teachers. But they'll also supervise their extended year services. So there was a stipend that was already being paid that's built right in that position. So it's longer than a teacher's contract, not an administrator, it's a coordinator. But it's, it's taking the work of what the principal, assistant principal, special ed director and the team have been doing so that they can go back and do their main function and this person can concentrate on that data.
Is that full-time?
It is a full-time position. So it is a one-year contract, and then we'll reevaluate it in Stratum throughout the next year. Anything else with that? Number five, partner with others, building and contribute to policy structures and strategies that foster cultural competence and sustain commitment to equity. As you know, we've been providing trainings, the school board was trained in an equity at a, an equity training by Mr. Mahia back in October. We did October training for all staff on implicit bias. And then we followed up on March twelfth, where we did an equity audit with all of our schools to look at equity. Those results will be shared internally with Ron and his team and at other schools. We continue as a team to look at the data within Alma, make sure that we are categorizing incidents properly. So if there are incidents of hate, or if there's discrimination, or if there's biases, that that's put in there, because that's a major incident, that needs to be reported out. And then the anti-discrimination task force, coming up with their policy and also their procedures for reporting and dealing with discrimination or hate within our schools, has been very helpful. I know Mr. Mahia's worked with our building principals and administrative teams to, to help them to understand what that significantly looks like. And Dr. Asbell's have been able to attend a couple of those meetings and be involved in that process. And then just lastly, coupled into that is just always reviewing our, our, our practices and policies and protocols when bias, hate, or any other type of discrimination reports come across our desk. So those are all the goals and the things that have been, Dr. Asbell and the team have been working on. Anything I can provide clarity for you as you need to kind of craft some language to this?
I don't think so. I'll have a few more updates that we can do.
Perfect.
Alright. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
And Allison, at this time, it's been forty minutes of public comment being open. If anyone has anything, now is your time. If not, we will close public comment at six forty-four. Alright. So Dan, I think you got a sense there from what the various committees are. And now is the time where we get to determine who serves on which committees. I, I think some people have certain preferences. So I guess we'll start, I guess, by order of seniority. So.
That's me.
Is there a particular committee that you would like to serve on?
Yes, I would like to stay on the superintendent evaluation committee.
In part, like, so I think that as far as that committee goes, like, in part, it would be detrimental because I'm the chair of it, to remove me before the process ends this year. And to.
Anyone's going to try and take you up. I don't think you need to explain yourself.
No, no, I'm not actually, but I want to, I think that next year it would make sense for somebody to join me on it. Because next year, I will not be there by the end of it. And so I think that this time next year, somebody should join me on that committee, is my real point.
I think we have four committees, superintendent evaluation, policy, safety and security, budget, wellness. It's five.
I mean, so we don't need to sit on wellness. That's just a personal choice that I made because it's my profession. So we don't necessarily have to have somebody on there. And if anybody else wanted to join, they would certainly be welcome to too. So that's not like something that I think we have to assign somebody.
I would be happy to stay on safety and security.
You are free because you were, communications committee has completed its work.
I'm going to not be on the budget committee. That's what I choose. So I'm going to go committee-less, since there's not enough for everyone to be on one. Is that possible? And then join the next, you know, pandemic committee.
You are also on the ad hoc technology, solar committee.
I am on that. Yes, I am.
So to the extent there may be more committee work after we do the RFP process, we'll begin that next week.
It's already out there.
But we have a meeting next week. Eighteenth. So there's that.
I mean, I do think it would be valuable to still have a, I mean, I know the meeting is for all of us, but to still have a board member, to get, to give Kate a little.
On the wellness committee you're talking about?
No, like, on the solar.
Like, I think it would still be valuable, like, we don't have to all be part of that whole project, but it would be valuable to have one of us to ma, to continue on that project, I think.
Yeah, until it's, it's still, it's complete, I agree.
Yeah, I'm so excited about it.
Especially, do you see the bill for the electricity last month?
Crazy.
My gosh.
So the remaining two committees are budget committee. I understand you've already expressed an interest in not being on the budget committee.
I, it's less of an interest, it's more of just, I, I'm starting to understand everything and I understand the time commitment come budget season. And I'm wondering if it would be irresponsible for me to volunteer for that if I'm traveling a lot for work. And just simply not at the meetings, you know?
Does that have to be, like, one person that's on it, or can we just?
I did talk to Jack. So first I tried to talk Dan into it, and then I talked to Jack. And this is what Jack says. And, and John, jump in here because you sat on it. So so I asked him if it would be possible for us to do it by committee. And I explained to him our own commitments as professionals and as board members already. And he understood that. And so the commitment is over the summer, we do site visits to police, fire, rec, highway and the library.
I didn't go to one of those.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't, why would we need to go? Okay.
Well, if they wanted to come to the school.
No, no, no. As a budget committee member, you sit on the budget committee, so the budget committee is, but you're saying you didn't do any of this.
But the budget, you're not, you're not a voting member, you're a state?
No, you're a voting member. You're full voting. I mean, the budget committee is made up of the people we elect plus a select board member and a school board member. That makes the budget committee. So so those meetings, so maybe those are somewhat optional. And then during October, November and December, they meet two to four times a month. And then January and February and March is about once a month. Really? I feel like you guys meet, like, all the time.
So at the town meeting, Jack said that that committee met a hundred and twenty times, or some ridiculously high number.
Yeah, I heard that number too. I, I certainly was not present. You really do, I mean, I, I've, I've been, so, so the, the department meetings are so, are like one-on-one, you know, fire department, one-on-one, so that when you get the spreadsheet, you're like, oh, fire truck, fire truck. Like, you're putting that all together. If you're brand new to budgeting or to municipal work or, like, like, anything, yes.
So we all would be, that would be all of us?
Maybe. I mean, it's, it's, it's your call.
Right.
And then the budget season, yes, you are going to these meetings. Some are longer than others, some are.
You said the average was ninety minutes?
Okay.
No.
I might go a little.
I mean, I saw you. I mean, you were like, sometimes they were four. I mean, I saw you. I mean, you were like, sometimes they were forced alternate nights.
Yeah, those were, those were rough nights, but you kind of, you know those. So fire and police, when you're hitting fire and you're hitting police, that's going to be kind of a longer night. All of the rest of them are relatively quick. Depends on the committee and it depends on the public. The public has every right to ask ten million questions if they want. And sometimes they don't ask any questions. Same with the, the committee members, right? So it's, there's a little bit of variability built in there. Seventy-five, ninety minutes, something in there. I, as you guys may know, I travel like a lot, a lot. And I zoomed into, I don't know, half of the meetings over the fall, like fall and spring are my two travel seasons. So I just zoomed in. It wasn't fun for jet lag, but I got it, got it done. It's doable.
But he didn't like the idea of
No, he said you can certainly try rotating a rap and we can see how well that works. And then he said our initial planning meeting is Monday, the twenty-ninth at six. So he was open to it. He totally understands our issue and I mean, quite honestly, like there, my entire tenure on this board, we've had somebody who wanted that role. So we've been really lucky. I mean, Melissa was going to those meetings anyways and Letty was going to those meetings anyways, so we just have locked out.
Letty's on it.
Yes, and she knows the school.
So just
Right.
As a, she has that perspective. She has your perspective.
Right.
I mean, like, I could definitely do some of them, but I don't think I could commit to like three, like October to December is very busy at work. And so like I could do even one a month, but
Can we kick the can down the road on this for a month?
Well, somebody has to go to the
I can attend the meeting on the twenty-ninth. I have nothing scheduled that night.
And I do think, I mean, there's no reason to not try. I mean, Chris and I chatted about it and I don't think that there's any reason. I mean, I think that when it comes to school budget conversations, I think one of us needs to take that lead and be like super engaged in that process with the budget committee. I don't think that should be done by committee, but our role in supporting the budgeting process for the town, I think that it would be okay for us to kind of do it by committee. I mean, maybe not all five of us, but I think that if two or three people share it and we stay connected, I, I think that that's okay. At least to, to give it a shot.
That sounds good to me because I think that just understanding, having a better understanding of how our budget fits into the town would be help, like helpful.
Right.
It's just
You also get a sense of what the other town priorities are and what like what contract negotiations and things like that. So that
Yeah.
You have a sense of the what other departments are doing and so forth. And that does play a role.
Yeah.
I think.
And I think that we always have asked Jen for those, like when we're having those conversations in the fall, we always ask Jen that, like what, you know, what are the increases going, you know, like, so we, so we have the big picture. But yeah, I mean, it's important for us to participate, I think.
If you'll, if you do have questions like that in the future, just if you could just shoot them to me ahead of time, just to make sure that I come prepared with them.
Okay.
November me to hate.
All right, so
April me.
All right, so we have safety and security, Megan, superintendent Allison, wellness, still Allison.
Yeah.
Because you're heavily involved in development of the policy and your, your grad students are necessary.
Yeah. And because I like it.
That. Solar for Kate. The only one open is policy. I really like policy. Do you have any interest in the policy committee?
It's all you.
Sure.
I'm interested in joining Allison a year from now on the superintendent eval. And if it's a committee approach for the budget committee, I'd be up for that as well.
Okay, I think we've come to a pretty good spot then on committee assignments. Is everybody happy with where things are? Probably not you.
Brian, the only other thought that I had, and this is just to lighten your load. But the newsletter is like the, probably the biggest undertaking as the chair. And it's not, I mean, I think, Chris, you had strongly encouraged me to not be writing them all. And so we tried to deviate up, but like I think sometimes it still fell through a little bit. And so perhaps maybe, Dan, you want to not be the writer of all of them, but just the coordinator of like who's doing what and what should be written each month?
So I have a
Unless you want that.
No, no, I have a, a plan for this. So that I
Does it involve a new AI policy?
Chat GPT is going to write all of our entries for the newsletter.
You're not a student.
It's pretty good.
No, what I was hoping to do this weekend, but didn't because it was Easter weekend, was to go back and look at our past articles in the newsletter. And then we can develop a cadence of here are the sort of topics we hit every month. And then, because the hardest part is thinking what to write, right? Like, once we've determined what we're writing, developing something is not a, a challenge. And some of this will fall to you, Ron, because some of it will rely on you, your reports and
For sure.
And I know in last month's meeting, Pippi mentioned something about reporting on special ed as being a potential item. But I think for next month's meeting, I'd like to bring the I'll make a spreadsheet, you know, here are the articles we've done in these months. And if we can hit the same topics
I'm happy to do that for you because I have them all.
Okay. And then we can assign people based on interest or availability. So I think that would be a, a good way to approach it.
And I also have the drive that I've drafted all mine in. And so I can just make that a shared drive for everybody so that they all sit in the same place. I think you guys are already on that drive because I usually share them with you both, but
And while we're on that topic, we would need to determine a subject for next month's town newsletter meeting. I liked your article in this month's newsletter, by the way, the follow-up on what the central office does. That was really, really good.
Really good.
So do we have any ideas for what would be good for next month's article? Do you think what you present tonight, Ron, might be something that we could refashion?
Sure, I'm doing a special education review tonight and kind of just following up on Pippi's conversation from February.
We did, we did, the two months ago was, I summarized Pippi's presentation. So that might be a little bit duplicative. But we could we could
So it's obviously for the May issue of the newsletter.
And that due date is usually at the middle of the month, right?
It's the fifteenth of the month.
Yeah.
What, wait, what, some months there isn't a newsletter. Is it just one month?
Yeah, I think it's just one month. I think that in the summer, there's just a one issue. And I do have to say besides Dr. Jones's correspondence from the select board, probably the other thing that I get, have gotten the most of is thank yous for the newsletter articles. I have gotten thank yous from a lot of people for the newsletter articles. When I checked in to vote, I got a thank you, like I just, people really, like genuinely appreciate them. So I do think that it's worth, you know, us investing the time to continue.
I agree. I think the monthly articles are important. I just still have to figure out what we're going to write for May. If there's anything related to the solar projects, to the superintendent evaluation, anything like that, I don't know.
Megan had mentioned the celebration of learning that'll happen. So we can, I can provide some information about what every grade level is doing.
And then Megan, do you want to be the one to submit that?
That sounds good.
That sounds great.
Yeah. No, I like that because that's even like for, like you, you guys didn't do that. Like it's a newer thing, right, at Swayze?
Yeah, no, like our current eighth grader student do celebrations of
Just to fun, this is what we do. These are what the grades do.
No, they didn't.
I mean, we just did a lot of littler. We did like Native American Day, like the third grade, all the wax museum, but not like they do now.
With a title.
Well, there is also the, like the STEM event that Hailey DeVorjeck recruits people for.
Yeah, yeah, that, you should cover that.
That's kind of a neat thing, the Read Across America that gets people in.
And like we did last, I mean, maybe it's a little premature, but last year this time, maybe it's for one more month, but we covered robotics too. And I know that the intermediate robotics team is in first place in the state right now. And what the other teams are, three or four of the other teams are in top ten or eleven, so.
Yeah, so maybe it's just fun things that
All right. So that ends report from the chair. The name of their items, Chris, Ron, that we should hit while we're on this area.
Nope.
All right. Molly.
Excellent. Okay.
Everyone's got three signatures on your manifests.
Perfect. All right. Thank you for signing the manifest. First, all your documents are approved by the Department of Revenue after the election, so we're good to go. And thank you for signing the manifest. And included in your board pack is a current year financial. We did have some ups and downs in some areas. Did anyone have any questions? Actually, I probably should explain this to you since you're new. So every, every month I bring a financial and in the upper left-hand corner, I put the changes from the prior month. So last month, the remaining expense is what you had available to expend was a hundred and eighty-one thousand. That's now down to a hundred and twenty thousand. So since last month, we did add sixty-one thousand dollars of expense. And what that is, is everything that's in the middle section. So we had some employees on leave where we had to pay additional people to cover those leaves. We had a lot of stuff related to getting facilities and maintenance because now that it's spring, well, I shouldn't say spring since we're getting a major snowstorm in a few days. We have been doing a lot of work. And yes, I probably released a lot of snow encumbrance. And I, every year I do this and we get a giant storm, so sorry about that. And then we just had some adjustments on the encumbrances for medical. And then in the bottom corner, this is where your revenue is different than planned, whether it's higher or lower. And in both cases here, it's higher than planned. So what makes up your fund balance is a combination of two things. It's your expenditures less than plan and your revenues more than plan, which make up the difference in that top right-hand corner. Then every year, we vote on trust funds and trust funds can come from fund balance. And so this money in the upper right-hand corner, before it's given back in the tax rate, that's what's applied to your funds if you choose to do it out of fund balance. And then in the bottom corner is your prior year fund balances. So every year we look at that, especially towards the end of the year, because when you give back a lot of money or don't give back a lot of money, there are swings in the tax rate. So we, you want to, you don't have to, but it's great to have that kind of consistent so you don't have those big giant swings. So did anyone have any questions?
I just had a question. Is there so I understand why the substitute line is where is is there one more leaf that's occurring? No, okay. I thought there was a third. Okay, all right.
Three.
Oh, but there's only two account, oh, okay. I, but it says only two here. Are all three of them accounted for here yet?
This would have been changes since prior month. So if the third person was not here before we ran the last financial, then it would have been accounted for. Not sure who the three people are.
I think this is the first time that it was the big jump.
Yeah.
Are they all out already?
You're looking only at the line for regular ed.
Uh, we're just looking at the substitutes.
So that was, that includes long-term subs and daily subs, that delta. And I believe it was for two people on leave.
Yeah.
And so there's a third that's not on here yet.
Are they already out?
It's, that, that's the consulting line because it's not a classroom teacher.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So, okay.
That's why.
Okay, that makes sense.
So we're not going to get another one added to that.
My point was, my point was three. It was three to start and three are
Okay, okay. Okay.
And then the special ed contracted service, do we continue to see that go up?
So that'd be a great question for Ron.
You, you mean?
The special, like the, an additional expense for less time.
We continue to use actually two outside contracted service lines, yeah.
But there, once those are engaged, they're fairly steady or? Okay.
And so will it be an additional ten thousand every month for the rest of the year?
Well, did, did the purchase order get opened for what we believe the expense to be to the end of the year?
I can't answer that question, Ron.
So
I don't know how the PO was written.
So typically when we open up a purchase order, it's to full year.
For what, we're encumbering for the full year.
Correct.
That was my understanding. So I don't know if it's
So next month, the top left corner might have a, hopefully like a flat or nothing for special ed contracted services because that would already have been captured this month and that PO covers the rest of the year.
Hopefully, yes. Yes, so typically the schools would open the PO and we always say to project to the end of the year. Don't, don't do it just a month at a time.
Yeah, we, we actually have two outside contracted services. Both are behavior related, okay? And I was going to get into that in a little bit, so we can always double back.
Okay.
I just had a question on the food, like the last page, the food data. Is this data from our school?
It should be unless I printed the wrong one.
Like the, the salary, like the expense looks like ours, but the data, like the number of kids using the lunch program?
Printed it super small.
Well, it's, it's, it's for the month.
Oh, for the
Yeah, it's for the month.
Okay.
Yeah. So
That's like every day or like the whole month that's
How many meals?
Worseer for each of those lines. Okay.
February was huge.
I know, that's actually really interesting. The numbers are like
Doesn't make sense.
For the shortest month it had.
We'd had ten times as many served. I feel like there's going to be something wrong with that.
And kids were out for a week.
No.
So it's a three week.
Yeah. And it could be a timing issue of when we saw the money as well.
Okay.
And zero reduced from sixty-one, that's interesting.
Right, but the timing shouldn't, I mean, it should be, it should be meal served for the months, for the days that February
Yeah.
we were in school, right? It shouldn't be a timing for money.
I was thinking the timing of when we got the reimbursement, but yeah, you're right. It is the
Like it said, we used two thousand three hundred sixty-nine breakfasts in February.
Yeah, can you check that, Molly?
Yeah.
Five hundred and forty-seven students enrolled. That's not the school.
That's what I'm thinking. It might be a different school.
Or it's a, there's an extra number in there and it should be two, two thirty-six.
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely take a look at it.
The expense, like that part looks about right. It's just the, like the numbers themselves.
It's, and it's just February that
Is off.
That is off.
Yeah, I can check February.
I mean, we certainly
And lunch looks fine. It's just, I mean, it's just interesting.
Well, lunch is still high, significantly higher for February.
That's true.
Yeah.
Which is, doesn't add up because of the number of days.
Yeah. It's kind of small for Newsy, but yes, I can check those revenue numbers.
Okay.
Now, the only other thing I wanted to talk about was the bond. So we do have to do the application to the bond bank. And one of the questions they asked me is what duration of bond you wanted. So we had come to you a while back with, I think, four different bond schedules, a three, five, seven, and ten year. So they wanted to know what you wanted. So the longer you draw it out, the lower the payments per year, but again, you're doing it for longer. Wasn't
Of all of the, with all of the options, I don't know. I felt like I was most comfortable with the seven-year one, but
I think seven is, I mean, I, I like, I think it makes sense to not, like to, to space it out. And I think seven is a kind of, it's middle-ish to long.
I felt like three made the payments too high and ten just seemed like too long.
I feel like we showed the seven-year model.
We, we did. So maybe you skewed my thought on that, but
Me as a committee.
That might be why I feel like that, but
And I, just as far as what we presented at the school district meeting, does what we presented affect does what we present affect how we make this decision on length of the bond? Like, we just, we just got approval for the bond, for the total cost.
You appropriated the, a full amount of the money, the 850, and then you also further appropriated the, it was like 21.
The first.
Something, which was the first interest payment, which was this, or for next year. So no, you've already appropriated the full amount.
And that first interest payment, is that tied to a particular bond's duration?
They're all this, nope, they're all the same.
They're all the same.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, um, one of the things that we clearly didn't answer very well at the, at the school district meeting was how we would take that, the 30% discount, tax, whatever it is.
Don't call it rebate, right?
Rebate.
Yeah, tax incentive, right?
I mean, I guess to me, like, how that works also influences how long, right? Like if we're able to take, if that money actually comes to us and we can put that in a fund and that fund can pay for our costs of our.
Three to five and it offsets the payment to taxpayers.
Right, but if that money is.
Comes back and has to go back to taxpayers.
So the, well, no, just like if it, if it's just like a.
It just gets cut off at the end and you're not paying.
Right, or if it's just like, doesn't get account, like it just doesn't get, we just don't get charged for it?
So the, so the bond application, it's almost kind of like buying a house. You know, when you have to get pre-approved for a certain amount of money? We're getting pre-approved for the 850, but we actually don't, we, it's much later that we determine how much we want to bond, which is where this would come into effect. So, yeah, so I did ask the bond bank.
I thought we had to bond it all and then, because we had to pay it before we got the rebate back.
So if we have further information before we issue the bond, which I believe it's in like, or before the, the, the bond council works with the bond bank, I think that's in like the June timeframe, then we don't have to decide how much we actually have to bond until then. I believe it was early, either very late May or early June. So if we learn more about it.
But you need us to decide.
I guess my understanding is, you have to pay, right, you have to pay, let's say, $800,000. You have to pay the $800,000, right? And then they give you the $240,000 back. You can't, so we can't bond only, you know, 560,000, because then we wouldn't be able to pay the 800,000. We have to bond the full amount. Then the question is, do we then pay, uh, do we then put that somewhere and divide up the payments? Or do we then, when we get it, pay that chunk of the bond so that our bond's lower? And you know who would be really good at this, a financial person?
Not our resident physician. Not me, but what would you say to do?
Well, I mean, I think, I, I don't know exactly how this rebate works. I think I need to understand that first.
It's a state, not rebate, but sort of rebate, it's a state initiative, right?
No, it's federal.
It's federal, it's federal and it's, it's a tax, so, so the way it would work, if I were to put an enormous solar panel array on my house, is that they would be like, they would be like, here is a credit back to your taxes.
When do they give you the credit?
With your next tax cycle.
But we don't pay taxes.
I know, so instead, we get a check back.
Do we know when we get that check?
Anywhere from three to six months after the project has been proved that we've paid the $850,000 is what we were given for information.
So, just to, maybe we don't need to go fully decide this at the moment. If this is just for the purpose of applying to the bond bank with so many other variables still to be determined, does it make sense to give either, there's probably a mathematical way to make this determination, either a particular, particularly short duration or a particularly long duration in order to give us the greatest flexibility in planning? I, maybe that, I, this is finance and numbers, so I don't know.
Go ahead.
Okay. Guys, we should, can you guys look at an amortization table and like have, have a financial person just guide you on what the best option is? You get the check back in three to six months and it is like a big honkin' check, which is awesome. But I was thinking that if you do, if the, if there's no prepayment penalty and the rates are the same, you do a 10-year loan, get the lowest costs, as long as you're comfortable with the amortization and what that looks like. And then you can chunk off the.
The rates are better with a shorter loan.
There's, what?
The rates are, are going to be better with the shorter, the rates.
And we have the tables, I mean, we got all, we got all three options, right? It was a three and a seven and a 10 is.
Three, five.
Three, five, seven and 10. So we have all of that information. I don't know, my vote is for seven.
How much less is the overall payment for three years as opposed to 10 years and the other?
It's in the data.
10 years total payment is 1,030,000. For three years, let me go to three.
But that's if you don't chunk off your tax credit.
Correct. That's straight out paying it year by year.
For 30 years, it's, for three years rather, it's what?
For three years, it's 915,700 dollars.
So it's about $100,000, $115,000 more to do that additional.
Like 10% of the overall cost of the project, right? Look at that, yeah.
I mean, I just feel like.
Over seven years with inflation, what it, this is why I'm saying, I don't have those answers, but a numbers person is really going to tell you, oh, it's actually going to cost you in net, you know what I mean? It's not going to actually cost you 100,000.
Molly, when do you need your answer?
I just have to fill out the bond application and I can ask him, I, I, it's due at the end of April.
So we're meeting again on the 18th?
We are, just to select the company, we could have that as an agenda item to also vote on the use of the bond if you'd like.
I, I think that would make sense, that would give us the time to marshal the amortization tables and get someone who knows what they're looking at.
Yeah, yeah, and then I can call the bond bank for some more information if I circle back with Chris and we can get more information on the federal tax credit and how that would work into it.
So where Rick wrote up the one that we did, he had it just paying the chunk off.
That's what I thought we were doing, just going, hitting it, hitting the principal.
Could we put it, like, do the lower, I just think it would be interesting, what's the, if we did a three or a five-year and use those, that chunk to offset the monthly payments, whatever the seven or 10-year would be.
But that requires us to also have, put, get a, some sort of trust fund, right?
Could we use like maintenance or, I don't like, can we repurpose something we have?
I think we have that conversation.
Uh, we don't have a trust fund unless I can go to the facilities trust fund, which would be paying for your facilities, so we just have to check the language on that. So that, yeah, so I think first step is, we need to, we need to, you, we need to get an answer of the tax credit, how that comes back, and it come back and we can pay that directly to the bond? Can it go into a fund and that we could use that as payments for future? So let, let us get that and then look at the total cost.
And which would be less, right? Because I feel like if you pay off the principal, it's going to end up being less total than if you just save the money.
Less interest, right?
Right, because then you pay less interest over it.
And there's also the option we can talk with, after we figure out more about the tax credit, the bond anticipation note, and then you'd actually bond what's left. We can call the bond bank back.
When she says we, she means she.
I just need, I think, I just need more information on when the credit.
What do you mean, we, you, but you can't, you know, how can you bond less? We have to have the money for three to six months.
Well, there's different options through the bond bank and they do what's called the bond anticipation note. And I'd have to get more money, uh, for more information on that to determine exactly.
Where they might give us 800,000 but only bond us.
It's like a short-term loan. And then you would bond the rest of it. But I can definitely call the bond bank back after I get some more information on the, the credit.
Okay, so.
How are we going to get more information on the credit?
I'm, I'm going to find some resources to talk to people that can tell me how this works.
Our solar committee board member.
That's a great idea, we are solar committee person.
I can call up Rick with the best of them and be like, tell me about this.
I think we got as much from him as we could. I gotta do some other digging.
Is there a period of silence with the companies that want to win this bid? Or could we go to, would someone there have some information maybe?
Um, we, we've been in contact with them and I can give you some of that updates with them. We've had three companies that have already looked at our RFP and we've got a company coming out tomorrow to look on the roof to actually get.
These companies must have in-house experts on the federal.
Yeah, so, I, I don't know if they dive into it. They put that as part of the project to let you know as the, the consumer that you're eligible for this, but I don't know if they, the specifics, because I asked that initial questions to both companies and they're like, here's the timeframe, here's how you get it from what we've heard. So I, I gotta, I think I just gotta ask someone that knows, that deals with this, what are we?
It would be interesting to, I mean, because to like, maybe if there's a way that you could touch base with one of the other schools that has put it on and see how they did it.
Can do that too, that's a good.
And then once I have more information, I can definitely have another conversation with the bond bank on what that means.
Thank you.
I also told Chris that if we win the Powerball, I will pay for it.
Oh, my God.
Have you bought yourself the ticket?
It's in the meeting minutes.
You do actually have to buy one.
Powerball tickets.
That'll be in the minutes.
It's fine. It's official.
All right, so that was.
I'm a billionaire.
Manifest and Food Service, that was also solar power project update. Unless there's anything else on that? Oh, uh, do you have anything else for us, Molly? It looks like you're eager to leave, so is there any, anything else you have for us?
No, that's it, did, do you guys have any other questions for me?
Molly, you are dismissed.
Thank you.
Can I just, on the solar project, so I, I'm not, I won't be here on the 18th. And I guess I would just, my request when you, when you consider is that I do love the education component. That would be my only.
When we talk to them up, to talk about who.
Will everybody else be able to make it on the 18th?
I, that's a Thursday, right?
It's not the super best day for me, but I can make it.
You're good, Kate, just need a quorum.
As of now, yes, it's here, right?
Yeah.
Five o'clock?
Yeah, and we have to have at least for 30 minutes, but I'm thinking we can get our information in in 30 minutes. Talk about the bids, you'll have those in advance, because I'll send them to you, because they send them all to me, but I'll get it to all of you in advance, so you can look at it.
Oh, okay, so I can just send Brian my thoughts too.
Yep, because they have to have everything into me by that Monday. We meet on that Thursday, so I was giving you time to look at it, be able to ask me any questions, then that way we can come and be prepared and then we can also decide how we want to bond it. Okay.
Should I have to be here for that or?
Uh, if you'd like to, we always love to see you, but are you required? No.
It's an official school board meeting.
It will be, yes, select that, yeah.
Sorry, John.
Zoom you in.
All right, so other items at our central office report, certified staffless renewal, is that going to be non-public or do you?
Yeah, we'll go into non-public and look at the list and then we'll come back out and make a nomination on that.
And then superintendent valuation, but also non-public?
Yep.
All right.
I do have the general assurances for you.
Okay.
Um, I've got two pages highlighted, first page, I just need your initial down at the bottom, Brian. Second page, I need your signature and then the date and then at the bottom also initial that. These are the general assurances that are coming up for our grants, federal grants for the 24, 25 school year. And those general assurances just says that we're going to follow all of the practices and procedures. We're really fortunate that Kathy Cuddy Edbert, she is our grant writer and she follows it to a T, because that is a full-time job, working and making changes. But that just, is just saying that we've discussed it here at the school board meeting, that we will follow the procedures and keep accounting practices current, so that if anything comes up with the federal money that we have, an accounting trail to show what we spent it on and that it had been approved by both the state and federal level first.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ron, you're up.
Great, just, I want to circle back to contracted services. Beginning of the year, we had contracted with a BCBA that would provide information about a particular student that we have at school and our own staff was taking care of working with the student. The people that we assigned, two of them left. And then when we went to this one company to try to bring in another person to work with the student, they didn't have anybody for us. So that's why I went with another contracted service company. So right now, we're paying for two BCBAs, behavior analysts, and from two different companies, and one of them has an RBT, which is a registered behavior technician, and that person works directly with the student. So that's, that's why that inflation. So it doesn't mean we have to stick with those companies next year. It would be great if we could get all of this in-house, that's the goal. So I would work with the SAU, I'd work with Renee and Katie Gallo and our team here to try to just bring all the employees in-house if possible. But we had to do what's appropriate to provide that service for that student. Last time we were here, we talked about Pippi.
Ron, can I ask you just a question? So if you bring that in-house, would that person get the RBT training?
We have, the person, whoever is working with the student needs to.
Have that.
We would like them to have that RBT certification, right? So it, it just depends on who I can find over the summertime, so that's the goal. And we definitely would need someone who would be providing programming and then looking at data about moving the student forward. So it's the complexity of the, of, of this particular kiddo. Last time we were here, talking about the guidance program, I did reach out to the other elementary schools. All of our elementary schools, big and small, all have one full-time guidance counselor. Exeter and Stratum have a social worker. Social workers provide a lot, obviously, we do not have a social worker here. Don't have it in our budget for the 24, 25 school year. I would suggest it might be something we consider having more conversations about. We don't have to get too deep into it now, but I think some of the smaller schools would also be interested in kind of sharing a full-time social worker, so it wouldn't be a full-time position here. Obviously, the, it's working with our families, with understanding their needs, providing resources, like finding counseling, working with families with like truancy issues. If a family is going through a crisis, it's, it's good to have somebody. Right now, that role, that's happening, but it's being taken care of by our counselor, our nurse, people in the office, whoever can kind of, you know, gather everybody around to provide those resources and support. So just something we might want to consider.
And we don't have to have a, I have been thinking about this a lot since that conversation though. And do any of the schools, it seemed to me that based on Pippi's presentation, that there was like a lot of administrative things that were happening, that she, there were a lot of things that perhaps somebody else could help her with so that she could spend more of her time doing the great work that she was doing. And, and I'm not diminishing like the idea of a social worker, but you know, I guess also I would love to think about like the idea of like, uh, you know, Mrs. Ochsner has an aide or the technology has an aide. Is there even like administrative support that we could provide? Mrs. Dusset and Mrs. McNally that would alleviate some of that other work?
Yeah, that's available now, actually.
It is.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we have people, we have two full-time administrative assistants. It's just kind of working together, maybe provide Pippi some way that she could not handle all those administrative things. There's a, whatever you want to call administrative roles, that's happening with our special education teachers too. Like not only do they teach our students and plan for our students and write, write plans for our students, but they also have to schedule meetings, do all the paperwork for all those things. So that, and they don't have a full-time assistant either, so it's.
Yeah.
Something that's part, it's part of the role. What we're trying to do is alleviate it. Pippi is also our 504 coordinator, so there's paperwork that goes along with that. So I've, I've taken on a couple of those 504s as well. Brooke in our office is available to help with the paperwork and scheduling, so.
Yeah.
That's what we're working towards, yeah. Great, so that's something we can circle back with, a social worker. I wanted to talk a little bit about our reading specialist, Jen Hennessy. It's, uh, it's her first year and it's the first time we've ever had a reading specialist, so it's been really successful. In a nutshell, she works with students the majority of our day. She provided her schedule and it's, it's really students with complex reading profiles and it doesn't necessarily need to be special education. So I think she's working with some students that aren't necessarily identified through IEP. So I think she's working with some students that aren't necessarily identified through IEP. One student in grade one, three students in grade two for intervention, five days a week, and two students with IEPs at that grade level. Grade three, one student with an IEP, three students for selling, spelling support, and in grade four, five students with IEPs. She also works providing lessons in classrooms, collaborating with our special education team, meeting with Katie Gallo, myself, to work on professional development and curriculum planning. We think the world of her, she's, she's really blended nicely in with our, our culture here, and is a wealth of knowledge, doing a fantastic job. So, we love having her.
Ron, can, I think I had most of this, but one in grade one, three in grade two.
For intervention, and then two more in that grade level with IEPs.
Three plus two, I, so six, and then in grade three, it was one IEP and three others?
Yep.
And then grade four was five?
Five students.
But that's just direct support, just to also provide support to others who are not on IEPs or not.
Yeah.
And so it's 15 students who have like a documented IEP?
Or a plan or a need, we also have a full-time reading intervention support person who does, that's all she does is pull students out for reading intervention.
And you think, like, I'm just looking at like, the, just want to ask the question, we have Pippi who's drowning in like 300 kids, and you, like, you think for the fifth, like, these 15 kids, the full-time need is there?
She doesn't work, Pippi doesn't work one-on-one with 300 kids.
But she's responsible for, like, if any kid has a tornado or the hurricane, whatever it is, you know, like, she's. So do you think for, like, and I don't know what the time commitment for each of the 15 is, but is that a full-time? Is that the right allocation, and it could?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Again, I, I did, I did have conversations with all the other elementary schools about their guidance program, even at East Kingston and Newfields and Kensington, they have a full-time counselor for small schools, and they have one counselor at the larger schools too.
I, I think that the question is not, is the opposite, is.
Is do, is the full-time reading, we have two full-time reading specialists and.
We don't know, we have one reading specialist.
But one and another full-time support person.
Yes, which is a paraposition.
And so is that, those two full-time positions dedicated to that are needed more than like a one and a half?
In my opinion, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd bring you back to two years ago, where we spent about $40,000 in special education money, because we were not providing the correct reading services by a certified reading specialist. That $40,000, one case, two cases, so 15 students, and again, I think that will either expand or condense based on the work and the population of the students, so.
Also, her partner, right now, is out for the rest of the year, that won't be the case in the fall, you know what I'm saying? So I think we're at a moment, we are at a moment.
The support person is out?
I'm sorry?
You're saying the support person?
No, our school psychologist is out on maternity, and she provides some of that counseling support as well, so I understand it's busy.
I also wonder, you know, about the, you know, just thinking about the superintendent thing, which is, you know, I will hearken back to it, which is, supports all students at all levels of learning, you know? And so thinking about like, is there a role, if, you know, if the, if she's not, you know, if there's 15 kids is not seen as enough, like, what about the kids who are testing out of their grades and they, there's no leveling, right? They're, like, you're testing the fifth grade and you're in third grade, you get the third grade curriculum, right? And the teachers, you know, and, and the teachers are like trying their best, but like, there's no, like, you know, the librarians does a great job to try and like help those kids like do correct books, but like, you know, I, I just wonder if there would be a place for, if the reading specialist had extra room to try and help those kids continue to advance in their reading levels, you know? I see teachers nodding yes, I like that.
I mean, I think that that's true of all of the interventionists here. Eventually, they need to start spreading across the, the capability spectrum.
Yeah. And I think I, I, you know, I know that our math person does both intervention and enrichment too, so. I want to do an overview of special education, so I'll chat a little bit, but also have a presentation will be up there.
I was wondering if that like first screen was part of some presentation, I was trying to figure it out.
So list of our special education staff. We have, we have our three case managers, K to five, Jenna in our preschool, we have one and a half speech people. Bethany's with us for OT four days a week, Rebecca McDougall's all over the SAU, but she's with us one day a week. Jocelyn does all of our academic cognitive, social emotional testing, and she's an LEA, local educational authority, this is the person who goes to all special education meetings to support the process and make sure that we're allocating funds and resources appropriately. And Katie and I both share that role too, so we kind of switch off and on as LEA for our special education meetings. I mentioned the three people that are with us, we have the two board certified behavior analysts, and then our registered behavior technician who works full-time with our one student, and she's doing a great job and loves our school. Those numbers, regular instructional aides, those are our two intervention people who work with students that are not identified through special education, and our three kindergarten paraprofessionals, which aren't really considered special education paraprofessionals quite yet, and then we have 16.2 special education aides. There's two pairs that work part-time, so they kind of jobshare. So just kind of a nutshell, and we went through this last year, but I just thought it'd be good to go over it again. Student needs come from a variety of places, this is how we kind of get a hint that something's not off, something might be off a little bit. Classroom information from our teachers on performance, a parent might reach out to us without us reaching out to them and say, we're really concerned about progress, what can be done? And then, of course, any of our diagnostics that we do kind of give us a hint that we might want to provide some intervention. So below, we call it RTI or MTSS, which is a multi-tiered support system, we provide intervention first, so a student doesn't go from struggling on a diagnostic right into the special education kind of realm. We do a variety of things, and it starts right with our classroom teachers, they try something different, they try different groups, they'll work one-on-one, and if we're still not seeing progress after collecting data, we'll work with an intervention person and do a little bit of pull-out. And again, at any time, we may choose to go in the special education direction, but we try to provide, and again, this comes up again and again in special education, the least restrictive environment for that student. We want all students to be with their peers, and if that's not possible because of needing some specialized instruction, then we take it to the next step. So here are the steps in the process, we suspect there could be a disability, a referral is made, whether it's from the school, the teacher, or the parents. At that point, our case managers reach out, schedule a meeting, and then we just start with a conversation with the family about what are we seeing, what do you think, do you think we should do some further testing? Sometimes the meeting winds up being, we're going to wait a little bit, we want to provide a little more intervention, other times we'll say, you know what, let's, let's provide some academic testing, we'll do some observation, and then, once that's determined, evaluations start. And we have 60 days to provide the reports and get back together to have a conversation. At that meeting, we go over all the data, and then we make a determination about whether that student is eligible for special education. And if that is the, if that's what is determined at that meeting, we have 30 days to draft an IEP, get back together with the family, and go over what the plan is for that student. And that is just the, the steps in determining whether a student is going to be part of special education. And then the services start, the IEP is what drives, what's going to show some improvement and support a student with a disability. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what types of disabilities we have here and throughout the SAU. These are categories that are designated by the state of New Hampshire. Just quite a bit, the majority of our students in special education have a specific learning disability, and sometimes there is one disability, and sometimes there's a primary disability or a secondary disability. Some numbers for us for how many students at SWEZI have an IEP? And again, it doesn't mean all of these students are struggling with reading or struggling with math, some of them have their number up there, if, if they have speech, because they have articulation concerns. Some of the kids on that list are in our preschool, so it's a variety of students. And those are the averages in numbers for our SAU, the state, and then the national average.
Is that brought up by having the kids coming to pre-K that are not from our town, or is this just Brentwood kids?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is the SCS average is higher than all the other three, is that brought up by our pre-K program?
That's just Brentwood students, yep.
So non-Brentwood kids in pre-K are not in that?
Yeah, and, and we're required to have an IEP in place by the time a child is three years old, if there's suspicion of a disability. So we, we're meeting with families when their kids are two, two and a half, to ensure that they have what they need. They go through a child find process, and they're screened by Karen Ringette at the SAU.
Have we always been higher?
Well, that's what she's going to show us.
Here's the next slide.
Well, that doesn't show us higher than the rest of the district, I was curious if we've always been higher than the district?
Than the SAU, I don't know the answer.
No, either, if I ask Dr. Bennett, we can get that answer for you, though.
I wish I had shown up at my meeting last week.
I feel like when there's a self-evidence slide, I'll have to explain. Main Street is obviously the K2 school in Exeter, and Main Street School is a grade three through five school. This is a breakdown by grade level. I know, what happened at grade four?
Do you, it's not. Do you find that, that those numbers just fluctuate at random, or do kids tend to, you tend to go up, like, will pre-K this year end up, like, by the time they're in third grade with more, or will they end up with fewer, or is it totally random?
Obviously, we, we keep, the more they're with us, the more students that we add or have a suspicion might have a disability, and what we want to do is write by the student with the least restrictive environment. So, again, that's why I kind of talked about the process for determining whether a student qualifies for special education. You have a, a school psychologist that does a battery of evaluations and kind of dig deep, and sometimes that disability is hidden very deep. It's not something you're going to see or hear, but if a student is struggling in first grade, but you know, they sound like they're reading, they sound fluid, but they don't, they might have some memory issues, you just can't put your finger on it. We don't want to continue second grade, third grade, fourth grade, I mean, as the students get older, it's a little bit, it's, it's, it's rare that they become identified in fourth grade, fifth grade, it does happen. It's never too late to kind of get to the root of what is going on with a student that's struggling, so that's, yeah.
But they do, they also do drop their IEPs if they, you know, if they've catch up?
Students would be discharged, we take a look at that, and we, the process is, we don't want to go from having services to no services. So usually, if we're meeting goals that are in there, and the team agrees that the student has met their goals that are in there, if we don't feel higher goals are appropriate, we'll have a level of time where there, the IEP turns to more of a consulting and monitoring. So we continue to have an IEP in place, but the, the, the largest part of it is, let's monitor the student to make sure that we are going to discharge them from special education. This is a breakdown of the primary disability only. DED is developmental delay. OHI is other health impaired. AUT is autism. And these are the primary disabilities. I just thought this would be helpful. There are certain milestones that students meet developmentally by age, I mean, we definitely don't want to hold all students must be doing this by age six, seven, eight, nine, 10. But there, there's certainly all those categories of what we have come to expect of students. So we don't, not putting our finger on exactly what it is, developmental delay is definitely appropriate. Other health impaired, we find this mostly with students who are affected with a physical impairment, and typically the students that are identified with OHI, it typically means like ADD or ADHD diagnosis. And a lot of those services provide, really relying on accommodations in the plan.
Do kids who, like, if you have like a type one diabetic, are they pretty much always on IEP, so they have the availability to?
Not necessarily, I mean, you're only on an IEP, that person, you could have a student that's flying with diabetes, is really not struggling academically in school, so it really needs to be some, affect their ability to learn in school. I would imagine, I know for a fact, actually, students with diabetes has a medical plan, so they have a plan, it's just not an IEP.
Okay, yeah, that was my question, so they, it's a different process.
And this is a breakdown of percentages of our students with all those different disabilities.
Could you provide some examples of like the more common SLDs, that's specific learning disability, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so primarily, it's reading. It's, it's, it's rare that a student has just got math goals, but we do have students that are getting services just related to math, yeah. And as far as our case managers that are doing pull-out or push-in services, these are the hours per week that we're providing for the different categories.
And are those the actual hours or just the time card, like the hours allotted?
Hours per week.
A lotted position?
That are being provided, the services being provided, yeah. I don't know, anybody had any other questions?
I just have a question, do we do any parent satisfaction surveys for students in the special ed program?
No, no, we meet, we, we meet with parents once a year to go over updated IEP plans. Every three years, a student goes through another battery of evaluations, so it's a three-year cycle for that, and then we meet with parents on that. So, parent satisfaction survey.
I mean, not necessarily specifically to hear, but I mean, in general, like, you, when you hear from parents, it's that they're frustrated, and I'm just curious if any of the schools. And I'm just curious if any of the schools do satisfaction surveys, Chris, or?
Nope.
Like, when kids, even when they age out of the school?
We don't have a formal process.
A feedback of, I don't know. That could be helpful.
I mean, you and I have had this conversation in, over the years, but, like, you know, one of the things that I have heard over and over again, and once again, not, not just for Swayze, but just the fact that, like, sometimes parents feel as though they're working, that, that it's not a partnership, right? And that they are, like, having to constantly come in and, and, you know, fight for their kid, and they are frustrated. I have had parents talk to me crying about the process. And so I just, curious, like, we've put a lot of resources into the program over the past couple of years, and it seems I haven't heard any of that feedback recently, but I, I guess I would be curious whether the parents who are getting support in the system feel as though, you know?
They feel the change?
Yeah, they feel the change.
So every year, students, parents are given a survey from the state, and especially for student, they're required by students who have special education. The return rate for the entire state is less than 10%.
Yes.
So there is a sort of, there is a parent satisfaction survey provided by the Department of Education that goes out to every student that has IEP services.
Do you get those results back?
From the state, we do after a while, so we can look individually. And again, the return rates aren't there.
It's hard to know, right?
I can definitely bring it up to Dr. Bennett. I know that, you know, there's always comments in the meeting minutes, so that's always documented where parents are and being part of the process. But to do a full survey, that has not been practiced, but I can ask why. Or even have her give comments of why that practice doesn't happen.
Right.
I've been, I've been at a lot of IEP meetings and sat down with parents, and most of the time, I have to tell you, parents are really, really happy with the testing results that they're hearing. Maybe they're not happy with the news, but they like that they're understanding and getting to know more about their child as a learner. So that part, really strong. I've had parents that have been disappointed that their student qualified for special education, parents that were disappointed when their child qualified. You know what I'm saying? Or someone who really wanted their child to qualify, and they didn't.
Right.
Or vice versa. So that's why we go through our checklist, we go, we go through the same process about determining whether it's a disability or whether it's a child that's struggling for another reason, so.
Yeah.
It was really helpful, a couple of months back, when you presented the data on, like, state test trends over the last eight years or so. I don't remember if there was, like, a subset of that data for special education students. If not, it might be helpful to see, I just, IEP goals, I know, can be so difficult to, like, aggregate in any sort of meaningful way because they're so specific to the student, right?
Right.
But I would like to, with just the amount of resources going towards special ed, you know, point to and highlight some sort of academic progress for that subset of students, whether it be through state test results, or I-IREAD diagnostic results, or whatever's appropriate.
Right.
There's an IEP subgroup.
It's in that presentation?
No, but you can, the data's online.
Cool.
Dan brings up a point that I actually meant to, maybe I should have said it earlier. But so around elections, a lot of, there was a lot of talk in Brentwood, like, on Brentwood Talks, and I think it happened at the candidate night. There was a lot of talk about the math data.
That was something I wanted to bring up, an old business, too, today. I think that we need to address that.
Yeah, I do, too. I mean, so I guess, you know, the general feel, the general sentiments were just that just being higher than the state average, if I don't have the data in front of me, 59% or whatever it was, meeting, you know, grade level expectations is still not good enough for what the parents in Brentwood want. And, you know, I mean, some of this is maybe a Swayze discussion, but some of it, I guess, Chris, is like my curiosity about IREDDI.
Sure.
And is IREDDI the right curriculum? Are we seeing improvements? I mean, I realize that state testing data is only one piece of that picture, but if the eight-year trends show us, like, IREDDI is not doing much for us for improvements.
I also really want to bring up the fact, the disparity between girls and boys in the math data, and, you know, and the curriculum that we're using, when we think about things like implicit bias, right? And why are, why, like, why throughout the state is it happening is one big question that we're not going to be able to solve. But why is it happening here in our school, right? That, that girls are scoring, scoring so much less than boys, you know? And is, does have to do with, you know, is there something implicit in the curriculum? Is there something implicit in the testing methods, right? Or, you know, how are we testing IREDDI? What, you know, and I don't know the answer to it, but I'm just wondering how we can close that gap, right? There's, there's no reason that, that the girls should be scoring less than the boys.
Well, I agree with you.
You know, and so we need to make, we need to figure out some kind of change to close that gap.
Yeah. And we continue to have those conversations during our PLCs, make our teachers aware of the data that we've talked about.
Has there been any plan, changes, plans that are happening around that?
I just, just more awareness, because, you know, from our standpoint, I don't see anything in the curriculum necessarily that is kind of not providing that inclusion and equity for our girls. So I don't, I don't know. And I don't know if there's research about the nature of boys and girls with their approach to math. You know, I'm not going to speak to it.
I, so for work, was talking to New Hampshire Women's Foundation, and I just asked the question, I said, this is a trend at our school, is it a statewide? And she said, like, statewide, there's like a 6% difference in girls and boys. She's like, it is a trend, not necessarily as wide as we're seeing.
Right.
I guess, like, for me, like, listening to the sort of community conversation over the four or six weeks of the election cycle, like, I would like, actually, like, an action plan, personally. Like, what are we, how are we assessing, you know, what's working and what's not working? You know, we're, what, three years into IREDDI post-pandemic? I don't know where we are, where we are at, but like...
We're four years total.
Four years total.
With Ready Math as our math resource.
I guess, you know, I mean, like, what's our strategy? Like, what's our, what was our strategy as a district and as a school to look at math and to start making progress that's actually trending upwards and not just like a this year-over-year that doesn't, isn't actually heading somewhere new?
We had a math specialist. Do we still have a math specialist?
There's a para.
We have a math interventionist. We've not had a math specialist.
Okay, math interventionist.
Yeah.
Which was a para position.
Yeah.
And the IREDDI is supplemental, right? The core, what's the core curriculum, or is it teacher-generated?
Nope. Ready Math is our, is the math resource.
It's core.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have math teachers. Ready Math is our resource.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? We're not, we're not just opening up a product and putting it in front of our kids, so.
I mean, is, are we looking at it, or is it just like?
So I can tell you, this is, in this district, it's the first time that you've had a common resource, grade K through eight. Never had a common resource for math. Now we do, and it's, it's using the language, it's looking at the math discourse, it's looking at the math thinking, and it's looking at the math competencies. How are we addressing that? So that is something that we look at, and that is part of what Jill will be continuing to look at, at it. We've seen a rise in a lot of our schools when we made that change, and we're able to provide common PD with all of our teachers and use, you know, conversations that are similar. So when, what, three schools are using everyday math, and some are using Singapore math, and some are using Ready Math, you can't have common conversations. So you can put whatever resource you want there, but it's the first time we've been K-8, so you know a project is three to five years. I would say the first two years in a pandemic, teaching online, so I would say in two years, we continue to look at the data. Our data has improved in math instruction for all of our schools, you know, so the lowest performing school, a small school, their math data has started to go up. But again, I think the validity of, and the reliability that we use the resources to teach it and get better at it, you know, you can see that in different, so we look at the data as a district every year. What are we doing well? What are we not doing well? We ask those questions at our retreat. What do we need to improve? Do we dig into gender? We have not dug into it that way, but that's another thing that we could definitely dig into. And then I would say that your multi-tiered system of support is where you should be looking at all data. Tier one, tier two, and tier three. So if we're not happy with 65% this year, then what are we, what are we going to do to continue to improve it? You know, because you just look at the three-year average for math for Swayze, 2021, 53% proficient. Last year, 69%, this year, 65%. So it has gone up, you know, and our goal is to continue to go up. So I don't think we've ever said we're just happy beating the state. We want to continue to get better. The national trend is, once they start getting to fifth grade, it goes down. That is the national trend.
What goes down?
Math scores.
Math scores.
And proficiency on all standardized math scores.
Doesn't that speak to what the standardized scoring is if everyone's going down? Is, shouldn't the average be the average?
I mean, that's across our entire country, not just us. That's, that's the trend. Once they get to fifth grade, that's like the height of your math proficiency, and then sixth grade, seventh grade, but then...
Compared to the world, is that?
I've just, I just looked at, you know, the states.
Compared to grade level standards, proficiency, like, it's not like normed, not talking about like 50th percentile.
Who decides the standards? Who determines standards? I mean, if, like, I don't know, it's just an interesting concept, right? Like, if you could say compared to the world, that's fine, that the US then flattens out. But if you're compared, like, compared to the US, the, like, grade level's grade low, you know, like, maybe that's, maybe they're unrealistic about where sixth graders should be. But I'm not going to have that conversation, because we're not talking about sixth graders. But I think it's important is, it sounds like we're, you know, that, that you, what you're saying is that we need a couple more years in the, in Ready Math system to really fully assess it.
I think to give it the full, is it doing what it's supposed to do? Yes. And then that's when it will be up for review as part of our competency review cycle in a year anyways, to look at, is it meeting what it's supposed to do? Because we have those set up for five-year cycles for every content area.
I think that we need to look at the disparity between girls and boys before five years because there's...
I meet with Jill Lizzar, our curriculum director, every other week. I know I've mentioned it to her, but it'd be good for her to kind of chime in a little bit on...
I mean, I think, I think the idea...
If there's something we're not doing, we'd love to know.
Coming up with some kind of action plan about what we, right, it, like, what, something, something needs to change. Like, we can't...
Yeah. I also think it's easy to get defensive about data. Like, if I was a teacher, I would be like, I love every girl in class, like, it's not, so it's not like a, but it's not an attack or any kind, it's just like, oh, what can we do? Because the intervention rates for girls and boys mirrored, I don't remember the exact numbers, but they mirrored those gaps.
There's more girls in intervention for math than there are boys.
And so, like, just how can we use it as a tool to, like, in our enrichments, do we have, like, a girls-only, not math club, because I would have never joined that, but like, a girls-only, like, I don't know, like, a something that...
I mean, it is true, right? I mean, like, I think that, like, if you look at robotics, like, there's a few more girls this year, but not...
Forced Madeline to do it.
Right. But like, there's a few more girls than there were, because there were zero last year. But like, what are the math enrichments that would be more appealing? But I also, like, I went back and looked because, because I don't remember this being an issue when Anna was in, like, third, fourth, fifth grade. And I did go back and look, and there wasn't the same disparity back then. I mean, I just remember her, like, talking about, like, the going out with, you know, Sue Mitchell, or going out with, I forget who was the interventionist at the time, and there, those were heavy girl groups. And I know that, you know, that is not true of my boys' groups over the years. They have not been heavy girl groups. And, you know, why is that? And I don't know, I just, like, in general, like, math is like a little bit of a place where I, I, as a parent, haven't been as happy, and I think the data shows that, that maybe there's some space.
And the, the sort of universal cheat code we always drop back on is, what have other schools taught? And SAU has any, you know, have other schools seen similar, narrowed the gap in some way? Like, are there other strategies that?
For...
Have other elementary schools in the SAU seen a similar gender gap in the past and taken steps to narrow it?
Right.
And other ways to copy that? That's...
And I think, you know, to the point of, you know, the developmental stages of kids, right? And that, you know, that, that elementary school is a very, like, I'm a girl, you're a boy stage of life, right? And the girls tend to sit with the girls, and the boys tend to sit with the boys. And so if you have activities which are even things like enrichment, V-Lax, right? You're doing sixth-grade math, and it's only boys doing it, suddenly you don't want to do that anymore. You just want to go back to fifth-grade math. I can tell you that from, like, my own personal experience of my fifth grader who was in V-Lax and was like, I don't want to sit with all the boys and do V-Lax, they're joking around with their thing, I want to go back with my friends and do fifth-grade math, right? And so, like, that, you know, and even though, like, I don't like the idea of these gender-specific things, like, it may be developmentally appropriate to say, we're going to do a girls' group of, you know, math enrichment, we're going to do a boys' group of math enrichment, you know? Because that's where they are developmentally, that they want to do that. And, and, you know, I'm not an education specialist, I don't pretend to be, right? But, so I think, you know, that's why I'm going to put it back on you guys, to be like, you know, how can we take steps to, like, talk about curriculum, talk about programming to, to get these kids all on the same page? Because I don't think it's an intelligence issue. And I don't think it's an, and I don't think it's a, you know, I think the teachers are great, although that's like not the thing either. It's not like, I think the teachers are like, go sit in the corner, don't learn math, right? Like, it's, but something is happening that's, that they're not getting the same thing out of the coursework.
Do you have more from your presentation?
Well done.
I do have...
Am I dismissed?
Three, three really quick questions.
We dismissed Molly.
I hope. I just, one, oh, sorry, the lightest thing, on the extracurriculars, is there no more chess?
I had chess with Mr. Schroeder last week. We need a, we need a chess person. He's coming back for take apart.
Yeah.
Tomorrow morning, 7:50, we'll be here.
To any concern about the eclipse and sending kids home during peak eclipse period?
There's a whole plan in place.
There's a plan in place.
All right.
Parents have that.
It's in the smores report.
Yeah, I should have read that, I guess.
It's okay. It's okay. Yeah, we're inviting parents to come and dismiss their kids. We've provided classes for every student and every staff member.
Are you going to give it to the kids on the bus as they're looking out the window?
It would be great if everybody stuck around, picked up their child, but, you know, we're going to educate, we talked about it at our assembly last week, too, so.
Awesome.
And it looks like it's going to be a clear day.
Awesome.
So says Kevin Skarupa.
You don't have...
I'm not sure about Wednesday and Thursday.
No.
So if you go to the Swayze website, so Ron publishes a newsletter every week.
I've seen it.
And so if you go to the P, that's where you'll get sort of like the, because Letty didn't either, and so if you want to, like, kind of keep up with those types of things.
Yeah. No, I appreciate the newsletter, it's great.
Oh, great.
And my kids have aged out of it, the school, so, it's sort of awareness. And, like, my wife's school just announced today an early release day for next Monday.
Oh, really?
So they can be home for them?
Well, they, they did a survey, and they found out, like, a huge percentage of kids aren't even going to be in school.
Oh, they're like going.
They're like, being, planning on being out, and they're not giving out glasses or anything, so it's, everyone lives at one.
She's in Auburn, right?
Yeah.
So they don't have any money to buy glasses?
No, they don't. They don't have money for anything.
There's no money for anything.
That was not going to happen.
That was horrible, right.
And it's, apparently, it's National Assistant Principal Week, so please, congratulations to Assistant Principal Gala.
You bet I will.
Any other old or new business or other matters? All right, so, I guess, Ron, you're eager to leave?
So I'll make a motion to go into non-public, what did you say, C?
C.
Is the staff list C, too?
Yeah.
Under C.
All right, is there a second?
I second that.
All right, roll call, Stan?
Yep.
Hi.
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 All right, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, well, we're, no, we need a motion to adopt the...
I'll make a motion to adopt the... I'll make a motion to adopt the.
Certified staff renewal, so Allison has made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second that, all right. And we will adjourn at 8:50.